Welcome, welcome, welcome everyone to a regular board meeting of the Cogahights Board of Education. Today is March 11th, 2020. It's 7:00 PM and we're in the Bono Ray Media Center with Mr. Muchio. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Utter.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here.
Mr. Souchaki.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Gobbins.
Here. Five present and absent. Want to welcome everyone to this board meeting. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having interest in actions of the board may participate during the public comments portion of this meeting. Please identify yourself on the board sign-in sheet, which Ms. Schukert was kind enough to put on top of that orange cadenza over there. A copy of the board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Please silence your phone during the meeting and would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Mr. Neiman moves. I'll second. Any discussion? None. Okay, Mr. Muchio, call the roll please.
Mr. Neiman.
Aye.
Mr. Gobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Utter.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki.
The motion passes 5-0. And now to one of the favorite parts of the board meeting is presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evans.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Houghton. Mrs. Houghton, you did answer the question, can we fit the entire elementary school in the library? And the answer to that is yes. And I see Chief Mecklenburg over there. He doesn't have his uniform on. The fire marshal's not going to shut us down tonight.
All right. Well, this is exciting. I was just standing over there saying how nice it is to have this many people here for good information and recognition of students. And we don't get the opportunity to recognize this number of elementary students on a regular basis, so I'm glad we were able to sneak this in tonight. I don't think they knew how many we were bringing. All right. So we're going to start with our fifth graders who participated in the Greater Cleveland Council of Mathematics competition. So I'm going to ask those students to come up when I call your name, and then I'll tell you a little bit about what they did. So that's Caitlin Amari, Ben Armbrust, Doris Chen, Brody Ellis, Riley Cruiser, Eric Lee, Madden Patel, and Johnny Urbannick. All right. So I'm going to give you certificates. Why don't you stand over here, Madden? Yours is taller than I am, so. Okay. So these students participated in the Greater Cleveland Council of Mathematics competition. Mrs. Boswell put it together for them, and then Ms. Acrely, who is here tonight, took over for her when she had to take off some time for taking care of herself. So Ms. Acrely took over. But they met on a Saturday, February 22nd, at Holy Name High School. And I was lucky enough to be able to attend for a little while there. And we had two teams. The challengers, where are my challengers? Some are here. And then we also had the big brains. They got to make their own names. These students, when I met them in the morning, they were very nervous. They were nervous about just what was going to happen. It's like you don't know. You have no idea what's going to happen. And they were all, these are all fifth graders, and they were competing against fifth and sixth graders from all over. A lot of schools brought sixth graders. But they were able to work together to demonstrate their math skills, and they all won blue champion ribbons. We were super excited because they beat out several of those sixth grade math teams. So we'd like to just recognize them and give them a big round of applause. Would you like to hand these out for me? And then I'm going to have Caitlin hand these to you. If you guys could just go back with your parents or wherever you were sitting, and then we're going to call you up for a picture in a minute. Get your certificates. Thanks. All right. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about, thank you, the Science Olympiad. And for the Science Olympiad, we had a group of very dedicated fourth and fifth grade students who participated in this competition at Case Western Reserve University on Saturday, February 29th. These students spent about six to eight weeks after school practicing with Mr. Taylor for the various competitions. And they are going to tell you just a little bit about what they did as they come up. I will give them their certificates. They'll tell you a little bit about what they did, and then we will, again, get a picture at the end here. All right, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I'll just say a couple of quick few words about this team. This team worked incredibly hard. They stayed after since Thanksgiving, all the way up until February 29th, which was leap year day. That's when they had that Case Western Reserve University. They put a lot of effort into their work. They go against sixth graders also. Some schools will bring mostly all sixth graders. We have a mix of fourth and fifth, and we bring them out, and they're nervous. They show up, though, on that Saturday morning on the campus, and they go to different events, and they do their best. And I'm so proud of this team. They did a great job. So let's give them a round of applause. And this team, I put a challenge to them. I was like, I'd like to talk a lot less this year at this meeting, so I'm going to stop talking and let them do the rest. So come on up, guys. Who's our first team?
All right, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Sane.
And I'm Addison Dekka.
Our Science Olympiad project, we did simple machines. We took a test all about pulleys, screws, inclined planes, and more simple machines.
All right. Are you done?
Yeah.
Great job. So we have Kaylee Sane and Addison Dekka. Good job. All right, team number two. Talk into the mic, okay?
Hi, my name is Jamison Camer. This is my partner.
Jaden Lamont. We did an event called What Won By, which technically studies animal tracks and feces and other animal animals.
It was a way for us to make new friends because this was our first year at Cogahights Uni...
It's like the university.
Cogahights Elementary School. And it did end up well. I ended up getting my friend Jaden.
Did you say feces? That's what I said. All right, next team. Right into the mic, please. You can raise it a little bit. You're a little taller.
Hi, my name is Carly Barco. And I'm Riley Cruiser. And we did Starry Starry Night for our Science Olympiad. We studied constellations.
Stars.
And planets.
And other stuff in space.
Carly and Riley, great job, girls. Next group.
Hi, my name's Cole Schukert, and I did rock hound, and I had to study rocks. So here's some that I had to study.
You had to study? Oh, you had to memorize those rocks, didn't you? That's a lot. Here, want me to help you?
Don't dump them.
All right, just show them words. You had to, go ahead, walk around and show them what you had to do.
It's a lot of rocks.
Those are very pretty. I like the blue ones.
So Cole, I'm going to put you on the spot. So you had to study those, and then what did you have to do? When you got there, what happened? Did you have to take a test? You had to take a test. Okay, all right. Great job, Cole.
Show and tell.
Hi, my name is Amari Rodriguez.
And I'm Marla Winslow.
And we did write it, do it for our Science Olympiad.
So they placed a model in front of us, and I had to write, I had to describe it so she could build it.
And when she was done, they gave me the directions, and I had to follow all of the directions exactly how she described it for me to try to remake it how it was.
And these girls are being very modest because they were our two medal winners. They came in fifth place at the competition.
Hello, I'm Joey Chahaki.
And I'm Julia Havlin.
And we are the Cogahights Elementary School Science Olympiad Egg Drop Team.
In egg drop, we make contraptions, and we put eggs in them, and we drop them from high spaces. And we, and we drop them from high spaces.
This is our best, our best design of parachute. We dropped it eight times down a stairwell, and the egg survived.
We had, at the competition, we had limited supplies, so we had limited supplies, so we were going for the lightest. When we were done, it was 13 grams.
At the competition, on the first drop, our, the egg broke because, because when we were test dropping it, the bubble wrap on the bottom of the contraption popped. But we had a fun experience for Science Olympiad.
I guess we, Joey Chahaki and Julia Havlin, practicing a lot right up by my office. Great job, girls.
Hello, my name is Divina DiNatas, and this is my partner.
Tyler Meadwell.
And we are the Optics Group. And today, Tyler and I will be showing you what we, what we did every single Thursday after school.
Do the strings help us tell where the laser is going?
These are the projectors that help us with measuring where the laser will go next once it hits the ground. Keep the string down here. We had to learn all of the law of reflection and stuff, and the law of reflection is where, is where the laser hits a mirror at like a certain angle, it comes out at the same exact angle. And we don't have any, so we're not good at trying. So, yeah.
Thank you.
We've got more props coming in. Brody Ellis' teammate, Gemma D'Amico, went home just feeling ill, just to have a party tonight. So that's who Brody teamed up with.
Oh, hi, I'm Brody Ellis. And for my science Olympiad thing, I did bridge building. So what I had to do, we had to construct a bridge made out of wood, and this is the bridge that we built. We took it to the competition. It held, it was 23 cups of sand, and so we had to attach a bucket at the bottom, and we filled it up with sand. And ours, we only got 10 minutes to fill up the bucket, and we got sixth place.
Oh, nice. Great job.
And I'm Joseph Delversio. I didn't have the trebuchet. We had to put a trebuchet like this and throw weight into a bucket where we put it by the half meter. And trebuchet is powered by a counterweight, and it's just the counterweights that we use.
Guys, you can set right up on the table. Put it right up on the table.
And here's a demonstration of how it works, so.
Going to you.
Guys, you're going to shoot it that way. Now, this whole trebuchet that they built, we started with just the design from PVC, and then it had to be a certain dimensions and all of that. So the real science comes in after it's built. The boys at the competition, they don't know what weight they're going to be, they're going to ask them to throw. So what they had to do is they had a range. So on those meeting nights, after it was built, they just stayed after school and just threw their trebuchet and tried to figure out how far that trebuchet would actually throw. And then at the competition, they come up and they say, okay, you're throwing this weight, and the boys have a chart that they created, and then they can actually estimate how far that weight is going to throw. And there's a bucket that they threw it in, so guys, are you going to, did you bring your bucket over? Why don't you stick it over here? It would be amazing if it went in, but.
Not diagonally. Okay.
All right, so he.
We're throwing 30 grams with a counterweight of 1 kilogram.
All right, great job, Madden and Joe. Here you go.
Good job, boys.
Very nice. Anybody know how to spread a trebuchet?
This is our last one. This is our last one, too.
I'm Juliana Kulecki.
I'm Garilla Kulecki.
And our event was mousetrap vehicle. We had fun making it, but and then we had some struggles. On our first run at the competition, it went nine meters, and then on our second one, it went 11 meters. We placed sixth place.
It was supposed to go 10.
Now, I've got to say, about the girls with their mousetrap vehicle, one of the hardest
things we had to do for the first five meetings was just to figure out how to set a trap. They were petrified of the mousetrap. It is a real mousetrap on there, and it will snap your fingers if you're not careful with it. So there was a lot of precaution taken place, be careful where you're putting your fingers. And then once they start, how a mousetrap vehicle works is that string on the arm, as Ella's pointing it up, that string gets tied around the rear axle. The mousetrap gets set, they use a pencil to set the mousetrap so it'll start clamping, and it slowly comes up and unwinds off the wheel, and that powers it. So the real science comes in is, like they said, it's supposed to go 10 meters and stop. So the real science comes in, like, can we get it to move, first of all? And it did, it went pretty good. Can we stop it from crashing into the walls? We did that science, fixing the wheels. A lot of different science went into just figuring out how to get it. We were jumping for joy when we finally got it to go 11 meters. I mean, we were happy with 11 meters because it was a long struggle to get it going. Girls, you don't have to set it. It's perfect. You don't have to worry about it. I don't want to see those fingers get snapped again. Perfect.
All right, great job. It's very difficult to get up here in front of all of these people, especially your peers. So it's one thing to talk to adults, but to have peers here watching you, I think you did a great job. I'm really proud of you. Our last group that we are going to talk about tonight is called the Carnival Club. And the Carnival Club is a group that was put together by Ms. Petrunia, who's there. There she is. Ms. Petrunia was trying to figure out a way to get more of our students involved in an activity that could benefit other students. So she came up with this idea and brought it to me, and I was like, you go for it. Little did she know how many kids were going to be interested. It just goes to show you that our students just want to be involved. They want activities, they want things to be involved in. So she made them apply, come to an interview, and then come into school early, two days a week. What time did they have to be here?
7:15.
7:15. Now, we don't start school until 8:30. So that is very early. Not only did they have to interview, apply, and then come in early, but Ms. Petrunia put them to work, and they were coming up with literacy activities for our pre-K, K literacy night. She didn't let them just get away with saying, oh, this is what we're going to plan. They had to look up the standards to show what standards they were teaching through their activities. And I have to give Ms. Petrunia a lot of credit because how many kids were there?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, third. You did have help, but you were the one who was there every time. Forty-two, third, fourth, and fifth graders who decided to really give their time and energy in order to make something great for our pre-K and K students. So I'm going to call all of you up here, and Ms. Petrunia, would you come help me with the certificates, please? And then after we're done and we get everyone through, then we'll get some pictures with the board, okay? All right, here we go. Dean Bardzalouskis. Right here. You can get your certificate and go back and sit down because there just isn't enough room up here. Lily Bachi. Enzo Kmetz. Not here. Liam Kmetz, not here. Bram Padall. Alia Archaki. Zoe Zavala. There she is. Madison Palmer. She's fixed it. Matthew Cowling. Garrett Heath, I know he's here. There's Garrett. Kalen Voitition. Clara Thrush. Molly Ryan. Gianna Apathy. Kylie Todd Kokis. Anthony Snyder. Isabella Jasco. Gianna Lefol. John Mankhaus. Sophia Palmer. Addison Dekka. Bea Pumphrey. Julia Havlin. I know she's here. Connie Chen. Emma Gaspere. Savannah Mandich. Harper Deal. Liam Conti. Alexis Unger. Kaylee Rush. Baron Rush. Sophia Mecklenburg. It is possible that I missed someone because I feel like there's a page missing. Okay, Kaylee Sane. Victor Torres. I know Victor's here, too. Adeline Addy Schmidt. And Tyler Schmidt. Giada Presot. Doris Chen. Brianna Nill. Damian Fulmer. All right, is there anyone I forgot? Okay, let's give them a big round of applause. All right, so we're going to do some pictures. I just wanted to say before we let all of you go, first of all, thank you so much for coming out tonight. I know there's a lot going on, people are a little nervous, but I am really happy that we had such a good turnout. I also would be remiss if I did not tell you that Mrs. Boswell wanted to be here tonight. She sent me a text today. I told her she was not allowed to come because there are too many germs here. So I promised her I would say congratulations from her. Thank you so much to Ms. Acrely, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Petrunia. We could not do it without all of these fabulous teachers. So, thank you. All right, so we're going to get some pictures. So why don't we start with our math competition students? You come up, we'll get pictures up here by the CH. Are you ready for me?
Mrs. Houghton, you have the floor.
More of me, you get more of me tonight. I was at a conference the last two days for women in leadership, in educational leadership, and it was called Joy, the Joy Conference. And I was like, I sent Mr. Evans something that said, it's all about me. It's about time they figured it out. All right. Anyway, I just wanted to talk to you for a few minutes about Cogahights Elementary School going to trimester reporting periods. So it is just how we are going to report out grades and progress to parents. So this will be very brief, and it'll give you a chance if you have any questions to ask. The change is just in the number of days in each reporting period, so, and the number of reporting periods in a school year. Right now, we have four quarters. So we send report cards out about every nine weeks, which is approximately 45 days in a quarter. Moving to trimesters, we would only do three per year, and each trimester would be about 12 weeks or 60 days. That is the difference in the amount of time between the quarters and trimesters. So the question is, why? Why would we do this? And I just highlighted a couple of things. There's more information up there, but one of the things, over the past several years that I've been here, the teachers have been asking a lot about, can we not give certain grades in the first quarter? Can we have a little bit longer time to assess this particular concept? Because in the elementary grades, when you start the year especially, you spend a lot of time establishing routines, getting to know the children, assessing them. We have to give things like the crawl in kindergarten, the eye-ready diagnostic in math and language arts. All those things happen at the beginning of the year, and by the time we really get into the nitty-gritty of knowing the kids well enough to talk about how they're doing, we look and we're saying, oh, we don't have that many grades. So we're going to give them a grade, and then what we find is the second quarter, the grades are much different because we're getting a better, truer picture of where the students are at that point. So they've been asking a lot. We've been X-ing things out on report cards the first quarter and, you know, only assessing certain, certain standards. So we started doing some research, and I was looking into different school districts or schools that have gone through a trimester recording period, and I'll show you that in a minute. But really, just some research behind why this would be a good idea. Now, it is just for elementary, okay? Pre-K through fifth grade, just for elementary. And it really is about establishing those relationships at the beginning of the year and having a good opportunity to have solid number of assessments, giving students a chance to demonstrate their growth. And when you look at maybe, let's say, third grade social studies, for example, this is another good example. Third grade social studies, there are quarters when they don't have as many grades. They might only have one test, for example. Is one test a good judge of where that child is in social studies? So teachers were finding also that they, they came to me and said, we're like making things up to grade. Like, we're grading things that we shouldn't really be grading. They should be more diagnostic, they are more formative. They should be things that we're just measuring to see how they're doing and then instruct in response to that. But we're giving it a grade because we have this report card that we have to put a grade on. So we started looking at ways in which we could, we feel like our report cards were a better assessment for students. And we found that schools who have gone to this have said that it gives more consecutive time for academic and social emotional growth in between each quarter. It also allows for us to align our eye-ready reporting with reporting. The change is just in the number of days in each reporting period, so, and the number of reporting periods in a school year. Right now, we have four quarters. So we send report cards out about every nine weeks, which is approximately forty-five days in a quarter. Moving to trimesters, we would only do three per year, and each trimester would be about twelve weeks or sixty days. That is the difference in the amount of time between the quarters and trimesters. So the question is, why? Why would we do this? And I just highlighted a couple of things, there's more information up there, but one of the things, over the past several years that I've been here, the teachers have been asking a lot about, can we not give certain grades in the first quarter? Can we have a little bit longer time to assess this particular concept? Because in the elementary grades, when you start the year especially, you spend a lot of time establishing routines, getting to know the children, assessing them, we have to give things like the crawl in kindergarten, the I-ready diagnostic in math and language arts. All those things happen at the beginning of the year, and by the time we really get into the nitty-gritty of knowing the kids well enough to talk about how they're doing, we look and we're saying, oh, we don't have that many grades. So we're going to give them a grade, and then what we find is the second quarter, the grades are much different because we're getting a better, truer picture of where the students are at that point. So they've been asking a lot, we've been X-ing things out on report cards the first quarter and, you know, only assessing certain, certain standards. So we started doing some research, and I was looking into different school districts or schools that have gone through a trimester recording period, and I'll show you that in a minute. But really, just some research behind why this would be a good idea. Now, it is just for elementary, okay? Pre-K through fifth grade, just for elementary. And it really is about establishing those relationships at the beginning of the year and having a good opportunity to have solid number of assessments, giving students a chance to demonstrate their growth. And when you look at maybe, let's say, third grade social studies, for example, this is another good example. Third grade social studies, there are quarters when they don't have as many grades, they might only have one test, for example. Is one test a good judge of where that child is in social studies? So teachers were finding also that they came to me and said, we're like making things up to grade. Like, we're grading things that we shouldn't really be grading, they should be more diagnostic, they are more formative. They should be things that we're just measuring to see how they're doing and then instruct in response to that, but we're giving it a grade because we have this report card that we have to put a grade on. So we started looking at ways in which we could, we feel like our report cards were a better assessment for students. And we found that schools who have gone to this have said that it gives more consecutive time for academic and social emotional growth in between each quarter. It also allows for us to align our I-ready reporting with report cards. So I-ready is given three times a year. That is the diagnostic and then the growth measure, it's given three times a year, so we could have that recorded each trimester on the report card. It would align with that and some of our other assessments that we give. So that was a little bit of the research behind why we even started looking at it. We started this discussion as team leaders in 2017, 18, so this is not something new, we've been talking about it for a while. We just weren't in a place to do the research and really bring forward what we thought was a good plan. So we continued talking about it in 2018, 19, and then did some research, and then I started talking with the other administrators, Mr. Evans, Dr. Players, about what we were thinking. So I gave you a list here of some of the schools that have gone to a trimester reporting period, just so you can see some of our area school districts, and you can see it's all elementary, pre-K through five. Some of the buildings are K to six, that's why it says K to six. And I reached out to them, especially Hudson, because they're close, high-performing school district that's close, and I could talk to them. And they indicated that they have had no, and you can't ever say no, but they've had no negative feedback about going to trimesters. The only concerns that were brought forward to them were quickly dispelled after they started. One of those concerns would be, someone might ask, well, you know, I don't want to wait twelve weeks to find out how my kid is doing. What I would say to that is, first of all, our teachers are really good at communicating with parents when there's a concern, or even when a student is doing really well. And one of the requirements that I've shared with the team leaders is that there would be a requirement to contact parents midway through the trimester if they're seeing a concern. So, you know, we used to do interims. Well, when you go interims, four weeks. By the time, if you have a snow day or a long weekend, you've got four weeks gone. So this would be more around this six-week timeframe. If you're really noticing something, you would reach, you would reach out to parents. They do it anyway, but we would just make sure that that is an understanding, that that's expected. These are the teachers who were involved in this discussion as team leaders. So I sent a survey out to the whole staff from this. This was at the beginning of this school year, we did a staff survey, and this is what the results said. Ninety-four percent of our staff at the elementary school felt that it would provide more time to develop those meaningful, to develop meaningful information about student progress. Ninety percent thought that it would give them more opportunities to build relationships and rapport before formal reporting, especially at the beginning of the year. And 100% of them said that the benefits outweighed the potential negatives. So we talked about all the potential negatives, we talked about the positives, and 100% of our staff members responded saying that they were all on board with this, that they thought it was a good way to go. So the next step was reaching out to parents. So I sent a parent survey out, and I got 109 responses, which I was really pleased with. I think that's a pretty good response rate, because a lot of times when you send something out, you only get a few people who do it, but I got these responses pretty quickly. And this is what it said. I had no idea, I had no idea what was going to happen when I sent it out. Ninety-three point six percent of parents who responded stated it was either an excellent idea, thirty-three percent said that, a good idea, or 23.9% said, doesn't matter to me. Doesn't matter to me if you do quarters or trimesters. Most of them said, made comments like, you know what, the staff knows best, I'm good with whatever you think, we trust you, we trust the staff members, we trust the teachers. So it was really, really positive. Of those 109 responses, I had eight people who thought it was not a good idea to move to trimesters. And most of those parents, their reasoning was, it's different than middle school and high school. Okay, it's different than middle school and high school. So we talked a little bit about that as a staff. What do you think? Do you think this is a concern? I mean, only 7.5% of people were concerned about it and responded to this. And we talked through those things, like, one, making sure that we reach out to parents when the period is longer, 12-week period. Two, making sure that parents understand that kids are making a huge transition when they come to sixth grade anyway. Honestly, it's an adjustment for the parents, but the kids, they don't care, they don't care if they're getting report cards every nine weeks or 12 weeks. So that was, that was one of the concerns, and we addressed that sort of as a staff, like, this is, this is what we feel we could respond with. So that was the result of the, of the parent survey. And so then I shared that information with the administration, and I'm here tonight talking to you about it. And then our next step we want to do is just provide parents with more information about trimesters. So there's a frequently asked question document, newsletters, principal letter, website, just sharing for the rest of this year what our plan is for the next year. And this frequently asked question document, scroll down here, gives you an example here of what it would look like. So the end dates for the trimester, so we would have August 20th through November 13th for the first trimester with report cards, November 20th. Our, our conferences would stay the same, we still have the conferences at the same time of year that we have now. The second trimester would go from November through February, which is really nice because with that two-week break in there, gives us time before and after winter break with report cards going out on March 5th. And then the third trimester, March 1st through June 2nd, with the last ones being mailed home on June 9th. It would not change the calendar in any way. The district day that we have called Records Day in December, as a staff, we discussed that, we would not ask for a different day, that would just be, instead of them working on report cards, they're going to be working on maybe interim reports, grades, progress monitoring, those kinds of things. So we're not asking for another, a different schedule or different calendar or anything like that. So in these frequently asked comments, I will be happy to share this all with you, but really, it just talks about why you would make this change at the elementary level, how it would impact the calendar. And then again, for IEPs, that was the only other question that really came up, we now say in IEPs that we will report progress every quarter or every nine weeks. So we would continue to do that until an IEP is amended or redone each year where we would change it to trimester. So in the meantime, we will still follow whatever the IEP states. Any questions? Yes.
Are you thinking next year?
Next year, yes. Those are the dates for next year, so.
I just want to say something, too, that, that you kind of touched on. I know, like, being an educator, too, when the kids see that latter grade, it can be devastating. And when it's only one or two tests, based on one or two tests, it's really not a true reflection. So that's just a whole nother additional piece that, I, I like this, I'm excited to see how this rolls out. I think it's great.
I'm excited, but we've been talking about it for a while. I think the, the staff, having 100% of the staff on board with something is amazing in itself, but, but they asked for it. So, you know, it came from them, and everyone, I have to tell you, for the last few months, been like, are we doing it? Are we doing it? Have we come to court yet? Are we doing it? Is this happening? So I think, I think it's a really good thing. I think the few negatives really quickly can be eliminated in the fact that the positives far our way.
Go ahead, Dirk.
The only one that jumps out at me is, now you've got winter break in the middle of that second trimester.
Yes.
That means getting back up to speed.
And we used to have that, too, right?
We just recently gotten away from it. Now you're coming back, that's the only thing that concerns me.
The good thing is, like, in pre-K through five, we don't do exams or anything.
Right, so it's not as bad.
So I think that was a big part of six through 12, you want to have those exams before you go on break so that you actually have a break. But yeah, that's a great question about that.
So my question has to do with the curriculum or the textbooks and things that we buy them. They almost have embedded lesson plans and testing frequencies and things like that. Are those textbooks and things, are those designed to accommodate either a four or three-session grade period?
I would say to you, first of all, nothing will change in terms of instruction, like, the curriculum is not going to change, it's just a matter of when we're reporting on the, on the curriculum.
I just didn't know, a lot of times a test will precede a grade, and I didn't know if there's a disconnect.
If you come to the elementary school, you will see that we don't use a lot of textbooks. So the math textbook series that was adopted, that we use very, we use that all of the time. It doesn't matter with that what unit you're doing, how long you spend on it, that's just a matter of planning out the curriculum map for the year. But like, for language arts, we're shifting away. When it's time to do a new curriculum adoption, we're not looking at textbooks, we're looking at leveled reading books. We're looking at all of the research that has come out, all the training and PD that we've had come in says, get rid of that textbook where everyone's reading the same thing, and let's teach them at their instructional level. So we've been shifting to that anyway. That's another thing that, since you brought that up, our students in K through three, K through two right now are doing leveled reading. So one of the things that will be recorded with the report card is what level they're on. Very easy for parents to see. My child is at a Level C, that is on level for kindergarten, or that is below level, or that is above level, and here's where we need to get. So you'll be able to see that progress all the way from kindergarten through fifth grade because we're adopting that and implementing that next year in third through fifth grade. Dr. Luca Bell has come up with a really fantastic tool that shows in pretty colors where a child is and where they should be, and he's already shared that with me, and we're going to share that out. But that leveled reading will also be reported, and that's how we're teaching now at elementary level.
That's helpful, thank you.
My, my first thought was about the communication with the parents. And, you know, some parents are more needy than others and want more information than others. And so I was wondering, you know, really that, you know, in the, in, when, when you first start the school year, you seem to have a lot of contact, you know, because, you know, orientation and then, you know, the conferences and things like that. But then as the school year goes on, there's less and less of that planned contact. So that was my first concern, that maybe, you know, you said that they would do some assessment, they would naturally reach out, and I think that that's really crucial here.
I agree. I agree, especially if your child is not performing where they need to be, and you're going to see that, like, you talk at the conferences and then the first report card and your child is below level in reading, you don't want to wait 12 weeks to hear what's going on. So that communication with parents is really important. And I would say that the majority of our teachers are really good about that. We have planned events all through the year, like the literacy night where parents, you know, it's not supposed to be a conference, but it becomes a conference on the side. The teachers share with me when they're reaching out to parents for conferences, and we also, almost every day, I have at least one or two parent conferences where they come in, the teachers call them to come in throughout the year. So I, I trust in our staff to do that.
I just want to second that. As a parent of an elementary, they do a wonderful job, and if there are concerns, it's brought up, and, you know, parents are very involved, and you guys are doing awesome.
People ask me all the time, like, all the tuition families that come in, they say, what makes your school so good? And I said, the teacher, it's the teachers. The teachers go 100% plus, and they are willing to stay late and come in early and
See it tonight.
Help people and talk to parents whenever they need to, and, you know, put your trust in them, I believe that, that this will be a good thing.
And the other thing, too, you, you touched on it as well, I mean, we're not just talking about the students that might need help or aren't performing at, at maybe a certain level. It's always a good, a nice thing to do to acknowledge the ones that are doing well as, as well.
Absolutely, who need to be pushed a little bit more because they're accelerated.
They can be challenged.
All right, I'll, I'll share this, if you have any questions, go for your topic.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Houchen, you're going to send us that little question and answer thing? Thank you.
I'll check your handy-dandy list.
Oh. Sorry. I had all those people that had a chance they could have come up there and went something down.
Okay. Treasurers Business, Mr. Muchio.
Thank you, President Dovens. I have a lot of items tonight, and typically, we have two board meetings a month, work session, and then our normal meeting, so with just one this month, I'm kind of cramming everything into this one meeting, so I'm going to try to go quickly through these, but not too fast. So, first recommendation, 5A, motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2020, regular meeting as found in attachment T1. Recommended action, 6A, motion to accept the bank reconciliation, financial reports, and payments of a board review as of February 29, 2020, as prepared and certified by the Treasurer as accurate as found in attachment T2. 6B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9s attached as found in attachment T3. 6C, motion to accept the attached list of donations received through February 29, 2020, as found in attachment T4. 6D, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T5. 6E, motion to approve an agreement with Comp Management Incorporated at a cost of $1,260 for the annual contract period beginning September 1, 2020, as a third-party administrator for administration, if applicable, of both workers' compensation and unemployment compensation claims management services and the group retrospective rating enrollment for the policy year beginning January 1, 2021, as found in attachment T6. 6F, motion to adopt a tax rate resolution, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Cogah County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Cogah County Fiscal Officer, as found in attachment T7. 6G, motion to approve the student activity programs for the 2019-20 school year as indicated per the revised Student Activity Purpose Statement for the class of 2020, as found in the Treasurer's Office, as found in attachment T8. 6H, motion to approve a modification to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2020, as found in attachment T9. 6I, motion to approve an addition enhancement to our current SC Strategic Solutions Agreement, adding the check printing module at an annual cost of $695 per year, as found in attachment T10. Since our contract year is October 1 through September 30, the cost is prorated at $347.50 for period 4/1/20 to 9/30/20. This service is to print checks and is needed as we are moving to the state software redesign as our current software of Lexmark is not compatible with the state software redesign as removed. 6J, motion to accept the settlement agreement with Omega Valley View LLC and Nat Charlotte LLC, as found in attachment T11.
Very good. May I have a motion for approval of the Treasurer's Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Chalky moved, Mrs. She could second. Any discussion?
Yep, and I'll go through these. For 6A, for our financial reports for the month, if everybody's able to look at the long sheet, T2D, I have a copy in front of everybody here, I have some favorable news for us. So.
T2D.
Yep.
Okay.
So we're doing a little better this month after reviewing where we're at financially for the year, and I want to point out two rows, row two and row three. So again, as we started the year, E1 is our beginning balance, thirteen, and this is the general fund, 13 million, 870,633, in the light blue in the top left. Where we're looking to end the year is going to be column N, row 31. So now that's at 13 million, 515,321. So we're cropping that deficit, which we started the year with, even down more. We're still in a deficit this year, but we're reducing that amount. And row two and row three primarily go to the change for this current month that we're looking at here in the financials. We can look at our five-year forecast, Q, column Q, and we were estimating back in November, 8.6, 8 million, 650,000 for the general property real estate taxes. For column N, row two, that's now 8 million, 869,467. So it's increased, and the reason it's increased so dramatically is we were conservative in our estimate for delinquencies to collect. We had about 50,000 as the estimate. Well, what we're seeing is that's coming in closer to about 300,000 as opposed to 50. Again, that's an area where I think we would have to be more conservative in that estimate, you never know how many delinquent taxes you're going to collect after the fact, but we're outperforming the estimate that we had thought, which we kind of always knew was going to happen, so it's a favorable outcome to us. If we look at row three, tangible personal property tax, this is our PUP, Public Utility Personal Property, and if we look at our estimate back in November, that was 2 million, 500,000.
Personal Property, and if we look at our estimate back in November, that was 2,500,000. Now we're looking at 2,676,000. So it's about 176,000 more favorable to us. That goes back to our valuation. Our assessed valuation has been climbing for that line item that we've seen. It was 33 million, I want to say, back in around 2013's tax year, and now we're at 76 million. So it's increased quite a bit since that time, seven years ago, six, seven years ago. So that brought in additional revenue for us. So that contributes to the, you know, additional favorable outcome, which we're looking at right now. As we go on through tonight, we're going to see a settlement agreement from our attorney, and that's 100,000 that's going to be coming to this year that's not included in this forecast. So, you know, one thing I think I try to stress is always looking at our finances every month, just to know where we're at in the general fund, which is 90% of where we're at in the school district. You know, that's going to crop that deficit by another 100,000. I think our revenues pretty much are going to stay as they're at with this estimate here, in addition to 100,000 we're going to tack on. Our expenses, I'm not thinking that they're going to go higher, if anything, they're going to go lower with purchase orders that we're not using for, you know, blanket purchase orders that we would have. So it's, I still think we're going to have a deficit this year. It's how much we can get to that point. I know Tom is shaking his head.
Don't want that bet.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful. We are, but-
Start turning out some requisitions at the end of the year. That's all.
And then you're in.
But just, you know, from a philosophical standpoint, I like to conservatively budget with, you know, small aspects of favorability that come off, you know, throughout the year from what we see. I think that's just a more reasonable, you know, aspect of budgeting as you go through, because you don't want to commit to items when you have to cut after the fact. I'd rather, you know, just kind of, you know, think where you're going to be at conservatively, and, you know, if you can outperform from that aspect, you go from there. So again, we're looking more favorable from what we were initially thinking for the year.
Good.
Okay. As I go through the new vendors, there's nothing out of the ordinary. I do want to recognize everybody donating for item 6C, the content that we have. We click on that attachment, which is T4, we can see the list of everybody donating, and again, we have a significant amount donating to the Bachi Scholarship. About 11,000 came in, so just want to, on the record, thank everybody who's donated for this board meeting that we have here to recognize them.
Can I just do a little plug? That, I wrote the check, but it's my siblings that put that money into me, so I had nothing to do with that amount for my brother's scholarship. Just, so that's on the record.
Because they're going to-
The country's writing the check. No matter where it's sourced.
Item 6D, which is our purchase orders, we have four. If we click on that attachment, two are to Martin Public Seating. That's furniture for the fifth grade, and we have Dr. Polaris here who could speak more to it if there are any questions. We're paying a portion of that from our grant, about 30,000. That's our CBCC grant. We do have a portion, about 11,000 being paid with general fund funds, and also three funds, permanent improvement funds. We have two other purchase orders, one for our sewer utility. That fits within our line item budgeting that we had. We're just doing another purchase order for additional anticipated costs that we're seeing from that, as well as for Gordon Food for the cafeteria. We're seeing an increase in anticipated food costs that we have for the year. Continuing on, Dr. Polaris, did you want to talk at all about Martin Public Seating?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's the grant that's supported annually from the Career Center, and so the overall cost of that classroom remodel is $55,009, you know, 55,009. So 30,000 of that will come from the grant. So ultimately, we pay the upfront cost. We show the Career Center, we pay that, and they'll cut a check with 30,000. So out of district costs will be approximately $25,000 for a complete refurnishing and remodeling of that fifth-grade pod area. I think I've shared some documents with the board in terms of some of the Friday updates with that area, so it looks like. So pretty excited for that. Part of the reason for the purchase order now, to do this, is so we can order it and have it here in June, so that part of that cost is the, pardon, Martin Public Seating is going to actually be doing the, putting all the furniture together and putting it in place for us. So we want to make sure that that happens in June, not in the middle of August, when our teachers are trying to come in and get ready for another school year. So that's the reason for that now.
Where do we stand in the seating? Because I know we've seen this on the agenda many times.
Yes.
So are we close to the whole school being done?
We are. I mean, we have kindergarten that we want to finish this year with furniture. Beyond that, if the elementary will be done, we may have little supplemental pieces here and there. So for example, we're adding a, we're getting another third-grade section next year. We're going from two sections to three sections. So I need to add another section of furniture for third grade. But what we're going to do there is we have some extra new desks in second grade. We're going to move those upstairs to third grade, so that'll prevent purchasing a whole classroom set. But in the meantime, I need to purchase probably six or seven more tables for second grade to supplement what they're giving up. So outside of the kindergarten area, and maybe a little bit here or there, we'll be completely done with the elementary. Over here at the middle school, high school, we're pretty much done. I mean, there'll be orders of chairs and maybe some supplemental desks here and there, but from a large purchase, this should be the summer that we're finished, because ultimately, we've hit first grade, we've hit second, we're done with third, we did fourth, fifth grade this year, we got to do kindergarten. Pre-K, we, pre-K was one of our first rooms that we've done, so elementary should basically be done after the summer.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for your help in securing grants and-
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sujaki, thank the Career Center and everybody else.
I ask, and they say yes, so it's not-
It's a great relationship. Yeah.
It really is, so.
Thank you.
Item 6E, that's an annual contract that we look to do with Comp Management. It's $1,260, and for the amount that we're paying, the services that we receive, especially when it comes to workers' compensation, third-party administration management assistance with us, as well as the group retrospective rating, where potentially we could see a refund coming back to the school district upwards of $18,000 for us. I think the return on investment is significant for that contract, so that's why we put it on. Going farther, we look at our tax rate resolution. This is a standard operating procedure from the county that we have to approve. It's more that we're just double-checking that everything looks correct back to the county, so it's a cursory review that we do. We're approving our tax rate. It is correct that they have it on there for the rate that we have, both between inside and outside mills that we have. I also attached last year's just to compare. That resolution is drafted up by the county, too. For 6G, that's the Student Activity Purpose Statement. This is revised by the students for the class of 2020, which is the senior class. It's for additional prom costs that they have, so that's why we see that revised Student Activity Purpose Statement. In turn, because we have that revised Student Activity Purpose Statement, we are increasing our appropriations, so that's 6H. It's only for that Fund 200, in particular, that special cost center for class of 2020, and it's for the $4,585 for additional prom costs that they're seeing. 6I is an agreement with SC Strategic Solutions. We use Strategic Solutions SC View for our requisition system that we have. All this is doing is adding an additional module of software onto the current software that we use for requisitions, and that module is for the ability to print checks, because as we are converting to our current state software, to the state software redesign, we're finding that Lexmark, the current printer and software that we have, which is kind of antiquated, which goes along with the state software that we're using, so it's all kind of old. So we have to go to an updated version. SC Strategic Solutions is the most cost beneficial for what we use, and it fits right in with our current software. Double-checked this with Neonet. I included that email verification, too, just as an attachment. So for the cost and what we're using, it's a good amount, and they prorated it this year since we're kind of starting halfway through as we go. 6J is the settlement agreement with Omega Valley View LLC and Nat Charlotte. I've included the agreement here for all to see, and it's going to be three payments, two within this fiscal year and one in the next fiscal year for the adjustment to the valuation from our legal counsel working on that.
Yeah, how did this come about?
Well, we have our legal counsel that's always working on settlement agreements, and this one, you know, they work on our behalf, behalf of the school district, and we authorize them to enter in these agreements, and we accept those agreements that are entered in on behalf of our legal counsel. So the agreement was negotiated with our, you know, legal counsel, and we're accepting that agreement that was negotiated.
So they tried to get a reduction or something?
Well, it was a, it was a lower valuation that was on Cogu County's books. If I open, let's see, it's going to be in the actual agreement. If I open the actual agreement, T11-
Ah, okay, I see it.
Yeah, if you look at the very first page, first half of it, we can see where the Cogu County Fiscal Officer's fair market value was for tax year 2018 was $3,393,400, and the school board filed a complaint for tax year 18 with the County, Cogu County Board of Revisions requesting an increase in the valuation of the subject property for tax year 2018.
Because that's what they paid for.
Correct. That's what they paid for. They acquired it on February 27, 2018 for the amount of $8,250,000, which was the amount that we requested the valuation be adjusted to from what Cogu County Fiscal Officers had on their books at $3,393,000. We're asking them to bump it up to what they had purchased that property for, which was $8,250,000.
Okay.
So the settlement reaches a compromise. They have all-
So this is the $100,000 you were talking about?
Correct. If we go back to, if we look here, item number one talks about the owner will make a payment in settlement of real estate taxes to the school board in the amount of $54,732.89 by check, which we received.
Okay.
And then if we go to three, on the second page, three talks about, so that's the first payment. Three is the second payment. So the owner will make a payment for tax year 19-
Mm-hmm.
-to the school board of $54,769.09. And that's going to be due, if we look at the last sentence of that paragraph, by March 15, 2020.
Okay.
So that's a couple days from now. So that'll be the 100,000 approximately that we're going to receive within this fiscal year, which will add to our general fund on top.
So we received it back in February?
Actually, we just got that check, we deposited this week.
Okay.
So the original-
So we got one of the two-
We got one of them. We have not gotten the second one. And if we look at item number four, that's going to be the last payment that we're going to receive from this agreement. And that's going to come March 15 of 2021, so second to last sentence on paragraph four. And the payment there is going to be close to $50,000 in taxes.
And then after that, the tax rate will be correct, so we're paying the right amount.
Very oftentimes, people own multiple units back there, so we may be bouncing from one unit to another unit that's actually owned by the same entity sometimes. I've watched David C. do this enough to know that some of the people, there are people that back out in Valley View that own multiple buildings back there, or their families do. So David knows him, they know David.
They know he's going to come and get him on the table.
Well, which is why, I mean, a couple years ago, the most proactive guy, he said, "Can you reach some kind of reimburse to keep him off my tail for three or four years?" And that, because, you know, David may look meek and mild, but his reputation amongst the, in the business community is that he's pretty much a pit bull. He's just very dogged in the way he goes about things, so. As I was about to say, if you look around at the districts that employ him, a large number of Cogu County school districts have David C. doing their property stuff, their tax stuff, so.
And he is paid by each settlement that he receives, or does he gets paid a different way?
We pay him directly.
Yeah, we pay him.
So not necessarily through the settlement?
At the beginning of our contract, no, it's not like the SR14 where he gets a percentage of the settlement, no. No, there's an hourly rate attached to what, and being an itemized bill, I think it's, Matt attaches it, but David does a nice job of itemizing, you know, and very specifically what he's working, what properties he's working on in his bill.
I think this is a situation where what we're paying his law firm is less than the amount that he's getting to the district in these property settlements.
Matt and I were talking, maybe, get back on the phone, might be time to bring David back to just have him go through one, you know, because it's been maybe a year and a half or so since he's come in and just talked to us about where we're at on some of those property valuations. And I think last time he was here, we just undergone an upswing in property valuation, so there was quite a bit of activity going on, and there were some people looking for some adjustments to some things, too. I know one big one was an empty, a guy that had an empty building, and David had been working with him for quite some time, but.
This is good.
Okay.
This is good.
Thank you.
Get extra money.
One other question to you, that the SC Strategic Solutions, that printing module, so that module allows you to do wires through there, too, right? Or is that just printing checks only?
Printing checks only.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Do we, like, what's the, what's the split between the non-checks that we produce versus, like, wires?
We don't do any wires.
You don't do wires, okay.
No. We do, we do one or two ACHs-
Okay.
-to our health insurance consortium, but we do no wires at the district. Actually, that feature was turned off, if I remember correctly, from the bank. The ACHs, we have a dual authentication approval on that procedure. So if we're looking at a percentage-wise, it's less than 1% for ACHs, no wires. Everything else is a check form. Everybody's payroll, for example, is an ACH direct deposit.
Okay.
Yeah, makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Muchio, would you call the roll-in, please?
Mr. Sujaki.
Aye.
Ms. Shuker.
Aye.
Ms. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0.
And only had one item for discussion tonight. That's the five-year forecast. It's that time of year that May is coming up, so we're going to have to create a new one. So we're going to review, you know, that five-year forecast a couple times before we go to prove it. I was just roughly looking at the calendar ahead. You know, if, we have two board meetings in May. We have one the 27th and one the 13th. I don't think the 27th for Board of Education approval is going to give us enough time to upload it into ODE's data collector, so we may want a Board of Education to approve the five-year forecast May 13. If we do that, just kind of backtracking into our process, we have a best committee meeting April 23. We have a Board of Education meeting April 8, and we have a finance committee meeting March 31. So it could be something where, on March 31, with the finance committee, we review the draft of the May 2025 year forecast, and then April 8, we have a Board of Education work session review of the May 2018 five-year forecast. And then April 23, at the best committee, have a review of the May 2025 year forecast, and then come May 13, we would have Board of Education approval of the May five-year forecast. So I just wanted to throw out a rough timeline, potentially, of what that could look like.
Okay.
If everybody's nodding their heads, it looks like potentially it could be good.
The only thing I worry about is that with finance committee, I thought we were going to focus more of this next meeting on extra levy numbers.
It could be something where we could schedule another finance committing before April 8. So if we want to do two, I just knew we had one.
But we also have spring break.
We do.
No, that's after, anyway. Okay.
Yeah.
Or we could just schedule a real long meeting.
We could talk, we could talk at that, you know, finance committee, March 31, to see, you know, what works for everybody's schedule, and then come up with an idea on that to make it kind of work in that tentative timeline that we have for. So I have for tonight, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Superintendent's business. A, approve, motion to approve unpaid medical leave for the absence of Laura Vaughn effective February 20, 2020. B, approve 2,000, a motion to authorize the payment to selected OHSA playoff workers for sectional district basketball wrestling held during the 2019-20 school year according to the attached pay rate schedule. Payments will not exceed $15,000 allowed to CHS for hosting the playoff games, and district funds will not be used to- funds will not be used to pay assigned workers. C, motion to authorize payments, sorry, motion to approve agreement with weatherproof technologies incorporated to provide renewal of Trump care roofing maintenance services at Cogu High Schools for a period of one year at a cost of $22,123. Pro the attachment. Ten, approve and substitute, motion to approve the attached substitute list for 2019-20 as updated March 3rd by the Educational Service Center of Cogu County. And I submit those for the board's approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of superintendent's consent agenda. Mrs. Schukert moves, Mr. Namon seconds. Is there any discussion?
Do you see that the unpaid leave, that's requirement of SCRS as far as the work with comp settlement is concerned? So that's necessary. As far as the playoff workers, we hosted one girls' basketball game and we hosted the regional wrestling tournament. And those rates are predetermined and that's just money in, money out for us to those workers. We've made some money on that facility rental, but the district, Northeast District Board kind of guides as a format that we have to follow with that, so we have to stay within those parameters. In roofing technologies, normally that's a requisition that would get approved in the summer. It's a year-long, that's with Trump call, that's for the summer maintenance and for whatever reason, it's a little between cracks with Neil this year. And the exact, that's the exact same amount it was last year, 23. We budgeted $24,000 for it, so it's in the budget, it's not an addition to anything that was there. And that, those are regular checks, and when they're on the roof, they're checking flashing, they're checking, they're tuck pointing. Unfortunately, and we had this done sooner, they might have caught the leak that caused us some damage in Mrs. Smith's room, but we didn't, they weren't on the roof in the fall because we didn't have an agreement with them, so. But they've always been very, as a matter of fact, our prices come down on that agreement because as we got roofs replaced, there's a little less tuck pointing, a little less maintenance to do with some of the new roofs right now, so.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Mucha, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes five zero. Mr. Evans?
Updates. I've spent the better part of this week dealing with the coronavirus and what's happening with that is, and that I think fluid is the understatement of the day, as far as that's concerned. Three webinars yesterday, one with the superintendent of instruction, and the only thing I took away from that is that they weren't going to commit to reducing testing at this point in time if those school closures, that would be a little disheartening with that. The health department, to actually, some of the new information I found out from Matt is that, two things, was that, number one is that I think people just, we naturally think about the flu season and when spring comes and we're outside and the windows are open, the flu season kind of goes away, dissipates. They don't know that to be the case with this virus because they haven't, they don't have enough experience with it. So for people to assume that is probably not accurate at this point, we'll have to wait and see how it plays out. The other thing that they did say is that they're looking at roughly 16 months before they can develop any sort of vaccination to help with that. So, you know, the governor came out with some recommendations, obviously had some effect on us because we've got kids in Columbus for the wrestling tournament, be the first time we're not sending out about 100 people that your wrestlers on, but, you know, we'll get through that situation. Eli has another announcement tomorrow. His announcement tomorrow is going to focus on mass gatherings. So while we have, we met today, we're going to meet again tomorrow as an administrative team, we're kind of doing business as usual, we haven't canceled any of the evening activities yet. I would have to predict that that's going to be his next direction he's going to go. He's biting off one piece at a time here as he's moving forward, so I would anticipate that he's going to make some sort of, somewhat stronger than a recommendation that we're not, we're going to have to cancel some things, so.
I have to ask to that, because my little mind was thinking.
Yes.
Is it different, because what I'm hearing is that outside gatherings are okay. For example, athletics are okay in spring because they're outdoors. So perhaps, moving forward, maybe some of these gatherings can be done outside in this, you know, like the reg ceremony.
Yeah.
Again, it'll be probably freezing next week, but, like, just to give it, if they come out with those parameters, outdoor things are okay, maybe.
And as he started to say that, he kind of got nudged by the doctor today. So he started to say something I don't think she wanted him to say. So it was kind of funny, I happened to know about three or four times during about an hour and a half press conference today, announcement, where she kind of gave him the elbow and said, you don't want to go down this road at this point. So very prescriptive about what he's, and I see this as a progression, which leads me to my next thing, the DC trip. We're just keeping an eye on travel restrictions. You know, right now it's still on, although we've got options with that. Ted was in contact with Novak Tours this morning. There's a lot of different things we have to consider. We may still be able to take the trip and then get to DC and have everything closed. That obviously is something we wouldn't want to do. We've got an option to go late May, we've got an option to bump it back until next year. Because, you know, we talked about late May, but we don't know that at this point in time it will have it run its course and will DC be back. And we're certainly anticipating, we know that from the conference in DC that there was, there is coronavirus in the state's, in the nation's capital. We don't know to what extent. I'm keeping an eye on travel restriction stuff, too. We don't want to get in a situation where our buses leave the state and then the governor says he's not letting anybody come back into the state. So, so we're just.
I didn't even think of that one yet.
So we're, you know, we're spending a whole lot of time on it, I will tell you that. And I get three updates a day from the Department of Health with changes and cancellations on it, so it's, we're certainly working away at it. We're working with the teachers on the possibility of school closures, for school closures from the governor's office. That's rumor that I heard today, that he's going to, he's going to unilaterally close all schools in the state of Ohio. I've got to give people our choice, so we've worked on what we would do to continue instruction. We know from everything that's been said, it's a five to 14-day incubation period, so I would not see him doing that for less than 14 days, it wouldn't make any sense to him to do it, to do it less than a 14-day period. That's a pretty extensive period. I think the rationale right now is that, is that everybody in the next two to three weeks is going to be facing the spring break. So if they do 14 days, they're really only closing schools for somewhere between five and eight days, and they're going to get five freebies in there because of whoever's spring break. I don't know that to be the fact, but that, as I look at the calendar and I look at what school schedules are right now, that might even make some sense, so. You see a lot of the days off, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, can we also, like, as a district, like, you guys, look at, like, the free rein reduce launch, that's one of my biggest worries, are those kids that are getting more meal here.
Right.
Because we are a smaller district and we can man some things that maybe he's just camp, but you guys can definitely.
That's a bit another part of our discussion, you know, what, what is, will he allow? We certainly have some things in the collective of bargaining agreement that I've already kind of addressed the union, because technically when we have calamity days, which that would be a calamity day, the students are off, teachers are off, if it's an extended period of time, we would want the teachers in to be delivering some sort of, whether it's Google Classroom, whatever, to keep the year moving. Otherwise, graduation will be on my birthday in July. But, and the teachers don't want that, nobody wants that. So we have a little bit of a luxury, we've got three additional school days that most districts don't have, so when it comes to the calamity, the makeup type thing. And if the state weighs some testing, we may be okay on that end of it, too. So a lot of things going on. You know, absences, House Bill 410 says we've got to send letters out for absences, well, we're not going to tell them to stay home and send them a letter saying, how come we're keeping your kid home? So we suspended the letters temporarily. So we're just trying to do some common sense things that, this is not easy on anybody. It's a lot of frustration on parents, what am I going to do with my kids? If schools close, it's a lot of, a huge economic impact on families. So we're going to do the best we can with it. And again, you saw my most, what went out today, my text message, I know it never did, the phone message never did go out, but the email that we're going to, schools, schools open. So, and we haven't canceled any evening events either. A lot of districts have done that. I said, well, we're kind of proceeding to apprehended right now, so.
Tonight was great, too. Might be your last gathering for a while.
Yeah. GPD, we're going to meet next week to work on some of my prioritization, blah, 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 blah. Matt, myself, Dr. Clarice, Jason, and Mark Salpek, to start to take a look at that and narrow that down a little bit, because we need to be able to at least have a, bring a number to the finance committee, bring a number for the board to be something that we want to recommend and have some, have ample time to have a discussion about the pros and cons of what that number might be and how it might be broken out moving forward. Good luck to Nolan and Joe at the state meet this week. It's a little bittersweet, Nolan will probably be down two more times, Joe's waited a long time to get down there, so for every family member to get four tickets, that's all they got. And each coach got two tickets, so we use the, we use the coaches' extra tickets to, because the kids have to have drill partners, because they can't warm up together. So each kid takes a drill partner down, and the state didn't allocate for drill partners. So we're a little frustrated, we had a couple of conversations with the state, because for basketball, the cheerleaders can come and they get a ticket, every cheerleader gets four ticket vouchers. So, okay, but, and administrators do, there's no administrative vouchers for wrestling because there's over 300 schools that are participating. And, but there's also no vouchers for alternates, or in this case, we've got 113-pounder or 220-pounder, they can't warm up together.
Oh, why not?
It's not a good thing, for either one of them. So we, they'll take drill partners down because they'll work out, when they get down tomorrow night, and they'll work out Friday morning before weigh-ins as well, so.
And these boys, tell me their names, Nolan and?
Nolan Frye and Joe Connors. Nolan's, this is, Nolan was third in the state last year. He was a district champion this year, sophomore from Valley View. And Joe Connors, senior, one of the captains on the team. As a matter of fact, Joe set the season and, I think, career school pin record this year with the, with his last pin in the districts. And Joe, and quite honestly, Joe was a little bit of an underdog, so there's all kinds of prognosticators out there, and they didn't have Joe as getting out of the districts, and he got out at the right time and pinned a couple of kids that the experts said he couldn't beat, and he beat them, so. It was fun. Apparently, from people that were observing, I was a little excited. I don't know that, confirm or deny that fact, but apparently I was a little excited, so. But the referees had some fun with me about that, so. And I'll be able to sneak in, too, so I, you know, pull strings, so I'll be able to get in and see the boys wrestle as well, so.
When is the competition? This weekend?
Yeah, actually, this is the first time it goes Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The state moved it from Thursday, Friday, Saturday to Friday, Saturday, Sunday this year because of parking issues on campus, and it doesn't make any sense because they're on spring break right now, so I don't know what, why they, and it's also girls' basketball tournament, state tournament is going on at the same time, and the state hockey tournament is going on at the same time in Columbus, so. Not going on in Columbus, and with not a lot of people there.
Yeah.
It was good for me, I was able to change my hotel room to a closer venue today, so that's what I was doing before the board meeting started.
Multitasking. You've got to do good work on keeping all those balls in the air. Moving on then to board business, we have a request to attend professional conference, I believe it's the OSBA Northeast Regional Conference. Has there been any update with respect to the, this particular meeting, given this virus concern?
No, no, I'll call Reno, because Reno plans this event, so he'll know as soon as anybody, so. But this is the one we went out to award a couple of years ago. It's the same place, the Lucas out there, so if you can go, great. I think we're going to receive the momentum award, and we might be recognized as an ace, having received an ace, too. I'll try and get some, we noticed here on the run the other day, they get a chance to ask us, so.
Do you want us to tell you who's going?
Yes. If you know them now, that'd be great. Okay.
If the coronavirus isn't checked.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at, too.
I would like to, I think there will carpool?
Yes.
Okay, because it's a distance.
Yeah, I'd hope to be able to make it, it's a little iffy.
Yeah, I'd like to go, too.
Okay, good.
And, yeah, just want us to know what Reno says about the status of the event.
Excellent. And I'll make sure City does registrations tomorrow for that.
Okay, so that, I believe, is the only item on our consent agenda, the board's consent agenda. Am I missing anything? Don't think so, okay.
Let's save that break right now.
Oh, okay, that's right. So can I have a motion then to approve the professional conference attendance?
So moved.
Ms. Edder moves.
Second.
Mr. Suchaki, seconds. Any discussion? No? Mr. Mucha, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes five zero. Board discussion committee reports comments. Does anyone have any?
I'll just, Mr. Mucha kind of said it, March 31st, finance meeting, Mucha's at five or six? Five to six? Five? Okay, five to six? And my one message would be wash your hands, probably. That's all I've got.
Mr. Namon?
Oh, just good luck to our wrestlers out at the state tournament again, so Nolan and Joe. And actually, it was great to see a close house, this might be the last time. So, and also, actually, thanks to Mr. Evans and all the administrators, too, about handling this coronavirus. I know it's sort of like mass chaos, but I think you're standing way out ahead of it and doing a great job. I think it's kind of a little bit overbore, so.
I was going to.
Ms. Edder?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I'm glad that we, you were proactive and did the cleaning and those two machines that you guys have bought, I guess. Did you already get them or put them on order to get them?
Yeah, they're on order, huh.
I thought that was a great idea to do that, because obviously we want to try to keep our schools clean as possible so everybody can keep coming to school and doing what they need to do. I was, I'm always impressed with how great our students do, so just a shout out to everyone tonight that we met, that in the math club and the science olympiad, and, you know, and then that carnival club as well. I mean, for such a small school, we get so many kids that stay involved and do things, and I just, I just think that's wonderful and a testament to the education that goes on here. Glad to see we've got some extra unexpected money in the taxes and in Mr. Sead's work that he's doing to collect delinquent taxes or not evaluated taxes that we can get through that one company. And I don't know if we're, are we taking a hit in our investments in regards to everything that's been going on in the stock market? I kind of had a little concern about that.
We're similar to everybody else with regards to, if you're investing in Star Ohio, so every other government entity school that would invest with Star, you know, we're all in the same, you know, pool. So it's kind of like right now with the coronavirus going on, how the stock market's kind of going down, with a lot of 401Ks. You know, we're just at the mercy of how the market's going. Redtree, on the other hand, if we, we don't have to open this, but if we wanted to, in the bank reconciliation, T2A, if we wanted to look at that, what that shows would be how Redtree allocates our investments. We have about $4 million in Redtree, so that's between certificates of deposit and commercial paper. Those CDs, we lock in for three years at a piece and they kind of overlap. We do know our funds are depleting, going down year to year in the five-year forecast. We wouldn't want to lock up too many in CDs because we wouldn't want to have to, if you ever get to that point, break a CD, wouldn't want to do that. So our interest rate is holding steady with the CDs that we have, commercial paper, that's starting to kind of go down as an investment, but the CDs are still pretty strong from when we lock those in. You know, I'm still trying to maximize our cash flow, so, you know, we have to keep operating cash just for bills that we pay in payroll, about a million dollars, give or take approximately, in that Huntington Bank account. So all the money, when we receive a tax advance from the county and putting that immediately into Star Ohio, so, you know, it starts accruing interest on top of itself, compounding. So, you know, trying to be as aggressive as we can with the market in which we're at, short answer.
I mean, thank you very much, because I was just thinking about it and also I just want to say, it looks like if you get an opportunity to vote for Kaya High School's for the cool school.
And just sent a little blast, not about it, Roylton passed us up here this evening, so.
And I saw that yesterday we were farther ahead and then Roylton was like inching up, inching up, so. And then again, with everything that's going on, who knows if they would even come through and do it, you know, but, but the, the virus and everything that everyone, so, but hopefully, hopefully we'll get it and hopefully we'll get the, a nice story out of it as well.
Very good. Mr. Suchaki.
Career Center's meeting is next week, but coronavirus is affecting Career Center as well and of course now he's got to coordinate with eight districts to try to figure out how to respond and Mr. Evans was spoken of highly in their efforts to try to get all of this stuff coordinated when I talked to Mr. Mangus earlier today. The teachers have been challenged or told to get together, I don't remember the exact amount, it was three weeks or five weeks worth of lesson plans that can be done remotely, which is really challenging when you consider so much of that is, is hands on.
Yeah.
Right? So they're working toward being ready. What can I say about that? Our next meeting is, is next Thursday. It should be a relatively straightforward meeting. There's nothing significant on the planned agenda at the moment, other than, there is one thing, apparently before I got on the board, they approved and moved to a, an account money for capital improvement and it got bogged down and they never did it. So the money is still sitting in the account and as Mr. Mucho has pointed out, the state doesn't like that, when you've got money sitting in the account you're not using. I think we've had that discussion here once or twice, so. They're, they're gonna move forward with the same concept, it's going to be a utility building that'll be on the grounds, but now it's going to be student built rather than having a contractor come in and do it, so. This is very similar to a project that Garfield Heights did not too long ago in conjunction with the Career Center where one semester's worth of studies for the construction trades was helping Garfield Heights to build a building. So now they're gonna do one on our own site. At least that's a proposal, hasn't been board approved yet, hasn't even been presented to the board yet, but it's coming down the road and those are always good things, so. And that's about all I got.
Good. Well, most of us, including Mr. Evans and his administrative team, worked across the street this evening, making a presentation to the Kaya Heights Village Council about, mostly about the, the pending capital improvements projects. And that followed a presentation Mr. Evans and Mr. Mucho and Dr. Claris did last week for Brooklyn Heights Village, and I think there's one coming up next week, am I right?
Correct.
In Valley View. Great. And so those outreach efforts continue. Also, Mr. Suchaki and Mr. Evans and others within our district attended the mental health summit last week and Mrs. Schukert did as well, the mental health summit that was held last week at Beachwood. It's, it's very, very sobering topics that that group covers, but it's also very important, so time well spent. Are there any possible future agenda items?
Well, this whole thing with what comes out of the GPD and numbers.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
You guys will be attending.
Yep.
And just a reminder to Mr. Evans and Mr. Mucho about self evaluations, we have to fit that into our schedule somewhere here.
Did you get that sent?
Yeah, I did. What does, what does the board think in, in, Mr. Evans and Mucho, about, about having a cutoff date for, would say April 30th or something, is that?
For what?
For, you know, the as of dates for their evaluations or we don't look at it that closely?
Well, what we've done in the past is we give them the sheet, they fill it out.
Right.
And then we, we come up with the process, if we're gonna do it all together, if it's just gonna be you, if it's gonna be a couple of people. And we went as far as June, like April 30th might be pretty quick, but I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that what would we want to establish for a cutoff date? I mean, we go to June, but someone's gonna obviously be forward looking because we're gonna be evaluating for future, and I think someone is academic, but I just kind of wanted to understand if people want a cutoff date or just want to leave it open and, and look at the, the performance of these two administrators and the merits.
The governor closes down, I'll have mine to you next week.